Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we're all here and settled. I call to order this August 27, 2024 Hybrid Meeting of the Board of Finance. First, we will approve the minutes. I move to approve the May 28, 2024 Board of Finance meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. We move on to a presentation from Madam Treasurer. Please begin.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Or Commissioners, I should say. Members of the Board of Finance. Today, we are doing the Treasurer's Office Report to you for the quarter ending June 30, 2024. That's an important date because, as you know, that's the end of the fiscal year '24. So you're going to be seeing some end-of-the-year data that we put together for you. Also, I gave you the handout there on your desk for the June report. That's what we call our Tax Maintenance, Tax Schedule and Maintenance Report. Just if you didn't want to go to the website, you can see that 10-year tax roll there, and I'll be talking to it in a flash. So, thank you very much. As we turn the page, here's the agenda. Hasn't changed a bit. So, that should look very familiar to you in all the things we're going to review today. Next slide is getting straight into operations and the property tax collections for the year. And you can see there, we always have the other two years, 2021 and 2022, because again, we're always collecting. And sometimes those delinquent taxes do come in for previous years. So for 2023, we were charged with collecting $869 million in taxes. We collected $843 million, which left $26 million uncollected. And we still have two years to collect, actually up to three years, to collect those before they get turned over to the state for collections. So that's pretty good. Here, we look at what those tax collections mean as a percentage, how we did with collecting. And for us, we're right on track for finishing our collections for the year at 96.97%. Again, with those three years that we have to collect and to continue to collect, that'll get up to 99% as you see on the rest of the 10 years there. All right. Now, we put together some data for you here on property tax collections and gave you some quantity information for the fiscal year. So, our call volume, as you know, we were the first office to go out and get that customer service phone system from the county that's now been deployed throughout. And so for the quarter, we collected, we took over 10,000 phone calls. And that's about average because when you think of that quarter ending, that included second-half collections that was in April and May. So we do take a lot of phone calls. For the year total, we took over 24,000 phone calls. So that's a pretty good amount. We have great customer service staff. Some of the managers are here that do the customer service. So we really give a hand to them for all of that. As, I want to jump down below that and talk about payment channels. And that's the official term. Ryan uses that, and I go, "No, no, it's not channels. Come on, we've got to have some other name for it." So I just say, "Hey, this is how we collect your money." So again, remember, you can always collect through the mortgage companies. And you can see the number there for quarter four. The vast majority of our payments are through mortgage companies at $114,000. Then you look at in-person and mail collections that came in at $40,000. And then online. We really want to keep an eye on online because that's one of our newer systems that we put in. And just for the quarter, we got in 22,000 online payments. Let's total that up for the fiscal year. So the mortgage company files paid $239,000 payments. That's huge. But for a county of our size with over $275,000 tax bills going out, kind of makes sense that they would pay about that much for the payments. In-person and mail, $152,000. So we still get quite a few in-person and mailed payments in. So we still have to go to the post office, pick up that mail, go to our drop boxes, and of course, have a fully-staffed cashiering area on the first floor. And I'm sure you've probably all seen that in action when you come in. And then online, 69,000 payments were taken online. So you can see that it's been very valuable for us to upgrade that online service. It's really been very productive. And of course, we were able to roll out that to most of the county departments in the county so that they can be taking payments online in this new method. And it's been working out great. And kudos here to Ryan, who's been a one-man band on that, going department to department, getting the equipment, the swipe card machines, and showing everyone how to do it, what it takes, and being the bridge to those other departments. So, thank you, Ryan. Looking at the right side of the page, just talking about delinquent collections there. For the quarter, we had, we collected $24 million in delinquent taxes, just for the quarter. It's the next line that's going to be startling, with $32 million in delinquent taxes. And as I've said almost every quarter to you, I wouldn't trade my staff in delinquent accounts for the world, and I never mention the word "private sector." No, we want them in government. They are doing best practices, and you can tell, are really collecting the money. But then the next table down below shows you how much is turned over after three years to the state for their collections, up to and including the annual auctions that we have. And you'll see there for 2023, that is the second lowest, lowest amount of turnovers to the state. The first lowest is the one next to it, which was 332, just the previous year. And that's really important because what it shows you is, with the figure above with the delinquent collections, not only are we collecting, we're also meeting the needs of the people that have delinquent accounts by providing referrals, services, options to them about how they can pay. If they need to go into bankruptcy, we have references we can give them. South Broadway has a great foreclosure group that's a nonprofit. We make a lot of referrals there, and they help out a lot and tell us, "Thank you so much for that referral. It was perfect. We were able to rewrite the mortgage. We did this, we did that. She still has her house." So, those are important things that we look at. You want to collect the money, but you want to do it in the right way, not only for the county, but also for that property owner. And we do that. So, I do want to thank my delinquent accounts people here and the manager that's here. We've got a new one. We kind of changed things around. So we've got Robert Dean, who's now doing delinquent taxes. Thank you, Robert. Now, we look at, since we've been doing all these collections, where does the money go? So here's, again, my pie chart where I say I glump categories together. And you can see here with education running the highest, and that, of course, includes APS, charter schools, CNM, and on, at 34%. That's where the taxes go. The county, Bernalillo, we keep 22%. And then the next yellow, the city and villages, they're also at 22%. Sometimes I can't see that yellow. That's at 22% as well. But remember, that's Albuquerque, Los Rancho, Tejeras, some other smaller communities that we send money to. So they're getting a good percentage, too. In the pinkish-purple is UNAM Hospital, the health care for our community. They're getting 15% of those taxes. And then the two small ones, the purple, are the environmental. So you think of flood control, which is AMAFCA. You think of New Mexico, Rio Grande Conservancy District. And then, of course, there's Edgewood Soil and Water Conservancy District. And they get 4%. The last one is 3%, which is the state. Okay? Any questions so far? Wonderful. I'll turn it over to Deputy Treasurer, Ryan Travestead.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me here. My name's Ryan Travestead, Deputy Treasurer under Treasurer Burge. To start off here, we're going to go over what the gross receipts tax collections have been, I guess I should say, distributions received from the state, how those have been trending. So if you look in the yellow line, well over last year, the last two fiscal years, that one little blip there in February was slightly under last year. Not quite sure exactly what that is. And then again, in June, just slightly below last year. The first two distributions of fiscal year 2025 are still trending higher year-over-year. So we'll see that in the next quarter. But still, strong gross receipts tax distributions being received. The next one here compares the budget to actual receipts for the year. So the little blue line there on each column is the amount that we had budgeted. So we'll see on the property tax side, the left bar there, we had $191.86 million budgeted across all funds. Actual receipts were $199.8. And then on the gross receipts tax side, $264 budgeted, $269 actual receipts. So I think that speaks volumes to the budget team, the finance team, the treasurer's office, that, you know, we're kind of trying to project out what we're going to do in the next year. It's really tricky to do because we don't know exactly what's going to happen in the economy. And, you know, are people still going to be, you know, purchasing goods and services at local businesses? Will they have liquidity to pay taxes? So I think these are very strong and encouraging results. The next slide here just talks about our bank balances and the associated collateral. Again, the collateral pledged is a backstop so that if that financial institution was to go out of business, we would receive the securities pledged as collateral to recoup our balances. So if you see there on the first line, on the far-right side, the $5.7 million uninsured and uncollateralized amount. So what that says is, if Wells Fargo was to go out of business on June 30, the night of June 30, we would lose $5.7 million of our deposit balances at Wells Fargo. So I think that's a very manageable risk. State law requires collateral, bank accounts to be collateralized at 50%. And if you see there in the third column over, we were actually collateralized at 74%, so well in excess of the state statutory minimum. The next slide here details our portfolio balances, a similar slide to previous quarters, excuse me. Starting at the top, our bank balance, we had $1 million at June 30 in our operating bank account, $96 million in the highly liquid account, I should say, use Madam Treasurer's term, bucket. In the highly liquid bucket, that $96 million is there to supplement the bank balances. So as accounts payable and payroll payments are made, we'll fund those from the highly liquid bucket. The next, excuse me, I shouldn't say payroll. Payroll actually comes from cash matched. I misspoke there. So cash matched, that's matched to the distributions the county makes for payroll and for debt service. So we know those schedules well in advance. And so what we'll do is we'll buy targeted investments for those amounts on the date that those distributions will occur. And then in the core portfolio, that's the actively managed cash that government portfolio advisors assist us with, and buy some targeted investments based off of the risk tolerance that we'll go over, and the investment policy that we'll go over here just in a little bit. The, oh, and then the final bucket there is the bond proceed bucket that we ended the June 30 with $34.1 million in par amount invested. The next slide here is a comparison from fourth quarter last year to fourth quarter this year. I think it shows a good picture of where we were and where we are now. And so the main thing that I want to draw attention to is the highly liquid bucket and then the core bucket. So you see at the end of last year, we had $128 million in highly liquid. This year, we have $96 million. And then $403 million versus $508 million. And so the reason I want to draw attention to that is if you see on the yield column on the core, the core is 3.27% last year, 3.69% this year. Last year, highly liquid was 4.94%, and this year it's 5.17%. So that might sound backwards to put more money in the core portfolio that's yielding a little lower than the highly liquid. The reason we like to do that is the core portfolio is invested out over a longer term. So we're going to get that 3.69% over a longer term than we would the 5.17% in the highly liquid bucket. So as the Federal Reserve begins to reduce interest rates, that 5.17% will drop relatively quickly. The core portfolio will stay at that elevated 3.69% for several years. So we think that's a good position to be in, as well as government portfolio advisors. The next slide here talks about the underlying securities and holdings of each bucket. In the highly liquid bucket, everything there matures less than 30 days, and it's made up of the local government investment pool, some entrefi deposit accounts, for a total of $96 million. I might just add that those entrefi deposit accounts, essentially what that is, is we have $63 million in one bank account, and the company behind the scenes splits that $63 million into $250,000 increments across banks across the country in so that that way we can keep that FDIC insured. The next bucket here is the cash match bucket. Shows the underlying holdings between Treasury's money market and one piece there of the Fed Farm Credit. The next goes over the core detail and how that's broken up between the different investment types and the investment buckets, or maturity buckets, excuse me. And then finally, the bond proceeds detail. And then overall view of all of the buckets and how they work together to make sure that we have sufficient liquidity to pay bills. So there in the less-than-30-days bucket, we have $208 million that we have access to to fund outflows. And then another $210 million that comes in within that 30 days in one year. And if you see the green bars on this slide, that goes back to that slide, the year-over-year comparison. You can see that that green bars, those are invested for that time period. So we're going to earn, you know, whatever the, going to look at that far-right column, the 72.5 million, whatever yield that we have those investments at, that's going to pay for that same rate for five years. And then finally, the net investment income by quarter. We finished the fiscal year with $32.9 million. So just a shade under $33 million. Yeah, well in excess of the previous fiscal years and definitely fiscal year 2022. And that's attributed mainly to a rise in market interest rates. And then coupled in with the kind of investment strategy changes that Madam Treasurer and the Investment Committee and the Board has approved through the policy. And with that, we will jump into some investment policy updates. So every year, well, Madam Treasurer, do you want to speak to the policy? Okay. So every year, the investment policy--
I'll be here with you, though.
Okay. Perfect. The investment policy requires us to review the policy every year to see if there's anything, any opportunities for updates and see if there's things that maybe we can do better. One thing that we've noticed is that we, I think it was two years ago, that we proposed to increase the maximum maturity from five years to eight years. And what we found when we were trying to execute on that is that there wasn't really a clean benchmark that we could transparently say, "Yes, this is what we're trying to target to." And so that coupled with the way that interest rates were, there wasn't really a favorable investments, there weren't really favorable investments in that five-to-eight-year time period. So what we're proposing to do is to increase the maximum maturity from eight years out to 10 years, which will give us that transparent benchmark that then we can report to and hold ourselves accountable to. So that's the main change that we would like to propose. The second piece there is on that benchmark that we talk about. Currently, we manage it to a zero-to-five-year Treasury index. What we'd like to do is change that to 90% of the portfolio will be in the zero-to-five. And then we'll just take 10% of the portfolio to invest five to 10 years. So we'll kind of blend that benchmark so that we can, yeah, we don't want to put all 90% in the five-to-10 years because we still have to have money to pay bills. But we also want to have just a little bit of the portfolios out there to earn that little incremental yield over the long run. Additionally, that small percent could help the budget department better project out long-range budgets for investment income. The third item that we wanted to set is that we noticed in the policy that the certificate of deposit, we didn't list a maximum maturity. So if a bank wanted to say, "Hey, we're going to offer a five-year maximum maturity," we think that's a little bit more risk than we want to take. So we want to cap that at a one-year time period for those CDs. And then finally, the bank deposit maximum holdings in the policy. Currently, we say that we can have 100% of the cash that the county has on-- Currently, we say that we can have a hundred percent of the cash that the county has on hand in a bank deposit. We think there's a little bit more risk in, in having that money in a bank than invested in treasuries. And so we're going to slowly start to look at, uh, bringing that down. So in this round, we're going to suggest to, uh, reduce that from a hundred percent to seventy-five percent. So essentially, uh, that's going to say that we have to have twenty-five percent of the total cash invested in some sort of vehicle rather than just parked in a bank account. And I believe, um, the next slide is we'll turn it over to GPA. So I, I wanted to talk through these investment policy updates briefly. So during Deanne's portion of the presentation, she'll present two recommendations. One, if the investment policy updates are approved. A second is if you don't want to approve the investment policy. Um, what, what, what essentially we're going to continue with, uh, holding the course that we have for the previous several quarters. So you'll see that here as, as, uh, Deanne starts to, uh.
And I was to get, just going to pipe in for a minute on the second bullet where we talk about, um, having ninety percent in that zero to five year and then ten percent in that five to ten year. Two years ago, we talked a lot about guardrails. We talked about, you know, we were shifting some strategies along with shifting some of those investments to go along with it. But with it, we put in those guardrails. And I want to make sure that you know that even if we're saying we're going out ten years, we still put in guardrails so that we're not, excuse me, so we're not going wild in that, but that it's a very predictive, structured strategy that's still going on. And, um, I, I think that's a better path than two years ago if we just went to ten years. Um, it's just, let's see if we can do it. The other thing is, you know, working with staff on changing strategies, making sure they understood what the strategy was, why we were doing it and how to calculate that. So, um, it really brought everybody to the forefront on that as a project that we all understood. And of course, we're working with, uh, every month, the finance group where we have that investment working group. So we talk through those things every month and then of course, bringing them to the investment committee. And I had a major oversight as well in that I have our newest community member that's on the investment committee here in the meeting, Robert Davis, otherwise known as Bob Davis, who I introduced to you in the beginning before the meeting started, but did want to get that on the record for you. Thank you.
Okay, Deanne, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, take it away.
Okay, so I'll need the slides up. So it's good to be in front of all of you today. I'm just so excited about this portfolio and the implementations of the strategies with the support of the board that have taken place. What we didn't really articulate in the, in the graphs there is this dramatic change of interest rates that we've had. Um, I went back and looked, uh, when we started, when GPA started with the county, that was in February of twenty twenty-two. The yield on your portfolio at that time was point two eight six percent and you had a hundred and thirty-six million dollars invested. Um, so over this time, we've, as, as the treasurer's just mentioned, creating these guardrails, which are right here on size, on target, on, on amounts, just creates this much very healthy portfolio that's number one focused on your liquidity needs and ongoing liquidity needs and then allows decision making to follow that. And the decisions that have been done by increasing these, uh, investment amounts in these much higher interest rate environment, um, will pay off the county, uh, well over a longer period of time. So, uh, a quick touch on that. So the Federal Reserve is expected to drop interest rates on March eighteenth. Uh, we, GPA expects them to do that. Uh, they have been talking about that for quite some time. Uh, and at this point, the two-year note has gone from a five percent, which it was in June, uh, June thirtieth. It's all the way down to a three eighty-nine. So it's moved that fast and my forty years in the markets, I've never seen a, um, collapse in yields as quick. So the market is leading this, the market is saying those rates need to come down. It's following inflation and, uh, coming down. And so, uh, we should see some changes. The portfolio is set up perfectly for that. So for, uh, the recommendations for the board, uh, is to not change the strategy. We have good disciplines in place. The maximum amount on the core investment portfolio was set at five fifty, currently at five hundred and one million. Um, the cash match portfolio is the one that takes your tax turnover is currently sitting at one sixty-six and we don't see that going higher than the three hundred, other than when we have the turnover period. And then your liquidity, so we've optimized and kept your portfolio right where we want. We have allowed for room to make a one more investment into the core account upon your review of the policy changes and that will dictate where to replace that money. So no changes on strategy structure? Next slide please.
De, Deanne, one thing I might add, um, madam chair, I just wanted to mention on the core portfolio size here, that five hundred and one, we do anticipate that to drop down by around four hundred million or by one hundred million, down to four hundred based off once, uh, the ARPA money that's being spent. So as that gets spent down, this will slowly, uh, uh, reduce down to that closer to the four hundred range.
And, and that's a really good point. These portfolios move in tandem with each other so we can adjust because we're constantly having maturities come due. Uh, so putting those ranges in and then we'll try to hold it there at four hundred million and not let it come, uh, much lower than that as long as liquidity is met. Okay, next slide. So for specifically for the cash match portfolio, um, we're recommending the same, uh, process. We have the portfolio matched to payroll and debt service. That's working out really well and allowing you to reduce the, um, balances in the bank. And, uh, so we're recommending to maintain that structure and that comes at the directive of, uh, deputy treasurer, um, on his decisions and placement of that money. Then on the recommendations for the core portfolio, this is where it depends on the structure. I do want to add another point to the extension of the five to ten year sector. When we're looking at investment portfolios, we invest them for the purpose and it was identified that you had a hundred and thirty million in reserve funds that you cannot spend. And so this question came up in the evaluation, should that money be in a separate portfolio or should it be blended into this core account? And the result was to put it into the core account. So that's going to make up, you know, we always like to tie the dollars to the purpose and that's going to represent forty to fifty million of that a hundred and thirty will be that longer term investment. And it provides again, an opportunity for that fund to anchor down. So again, managing with the disciplines, the first proposal is that we take that additional forty to fifty million, place it out in that five to ten year sector where you see the, uh, blue buckets and no green, uh, and ladder that into the portfolio. And then as maturities come due, uh, we'll be pulling those back to the liquidity. So it gives us an opportunity to anchor those rates. They have come down, uh, from the highs, but we still feel that there's value in that five to ten year sector.
And if I can jump in, Deanne, um, as well as those reserves are the required mandatory reserves that we've talked about. DFA has reserves for us as well as within the county, we have reserves that, um, we wanted to say, what do we do with those? Those are important. They're in statute, they're in ordinance resolution. So should we break them out, should we keep them in? Um, so that was the discussion that we had and, uh, the decisions that, that we've, we made. So if you remember conversations of saying, you know, we have those mandatory reserves, that's, that's what we're talking about.
So also the benchmark duration, so we've talked a lot about duration over the last year. So the duration of the new benchmark with this option would be two and a half years, close to two point five. That's also the reason of, um, extending that policy to a two point five as well because this portfolio will pull out a little bit and you'll always have your liquidity components that keeps you shorter than that. Option two, uh, option B is to maintain and not extend out to the ten year sector, maintain the zero to five. And we would just take the, uh, uh, the maturities coming due that are not needed for liquidity and reinvest them to the current strategy. So depending on your, uh, discussions with policy, uh, will, uh, you're approving either A or B. And then lastly, we have the bond proceeds, um, oh, excuse me. Uh, so just to report on the diversification of the, uh, core investment fund, we're pretty close to target. Again, discipline and guidelines is really important. So we're a little bit light on agency securities, a little bit heavy in treasury securities. That's because we haven't seen a lot of yield value to fully invest to the agency market, but we continue to seek that. As interest rates come down, we should see those spread, spreads widen out and reduce that treasury component slightly. And we're slightly under target on super nationals, but we're pretty close. So feel real good about the distributions and the, um, of the investment types and using all of your policy allowable securities. And then lastly is the bond proceeds. So we take directive from the treasurer's office on the, uh, maturity needs based on project funds and expenditures. And so the approval from the board today is to continue to take directions and we'll invest to cash match those. And that portfolio is yielding, uh, above five percent at this time. So the summary of the recommendations for the board today is to reinvest the maturities in the cash match based on cash flow needs. Uh, provide option A or B depending on your approval of the policy to ten years. And then for bond proceeds, invest as directed by the finance team. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Then we'll continue through with the presentation, uh, where we talk about other office news, uh, that's been going on. We, we, we've been really busy and, um, that, that fourth quarter, you forget how much you wrap up and the things that you do, so we tried to capture those for you. Um, just internally with operations, this is always the time that we have our annual policy review. So you've heard that. We're still working with, uh, the property tax division, uh, of the state of New Mexico for our annual auction. Uh, right now they are looking at October along with Sandoval County to do that. Today they were in Los Alamos with an auction, so they'll be coming down and, and getting that scheduled. They're a little bit delayed, uh, primarily because their contracted worker that was for dedicated to Burnley County did retire as of July first. So, uh, he was really just kind of wrapping things up, boxing it up. Uh, so now they, they're coming back and there's the handoff there that's going on. Uh, also we finished that annual internal audit that we completed. Also, there's been a lot of discussions, as you've heard here, about that ARPA deadline that's coming up. And the ARPA deadline twelve thirty-one is just about encumbering that money. We don't have to have it spent till twenty-six, but it does have to be encumbered by the end of this year, this calendar year. So we've, we've talked a lot about that. We're looking at the, uh, twenty twenty-four upcoming tax collections of the calendar. We started that ten month payment plan that started. Uh, the assessor data, working with the assessor, uh, because they're, they're in some delay as well with protests. So we want to make sure we have a good handoff and a good file from them, uh, on October first. Uh, you'll know too that the Mill Levy will be coming to you as a commission, uh, September first from DFA. So that's probably on your next agenda meeting in, uh, September. And then of course, we have to print and mail by November first. Uh, preferably we like to do it a few days earlier, but, uh, November first is the drop dead date to get those, those bills out and mailed. Also, community out, outreach and festivals remain very active. Uh, so, uh, you can see there, we've got the state fair coming up. So we have county day there on the twelfth. We have the East Mountain Celebration on the twenty-second, we look forward to that. My administrative assistant Tiffany has been working on scheduling the senior centers and community center outreach meetings that we have in November, uh, and also planning the radio, TV news releases as well. So we're, we're putting all those together. Uh, no update, thank goodness. County man, county, uh, attorney Ken Martinez, uh, I think has quieted them down pretty well with the digital wallets. We have no update on that, knock on wood. So that's it. Although I did put, um, the, uh, tax schedule and maintenance report on there for you. So you see that ten year tax roll that, um, is, is under the treasurer's office. So it's, it's pretty awesome when you have, when you say you have to collect seven point two billion dollars and that you're responsible for that ten years. So those delinquent taxes that come in, they go back to those ten years wherever we put them. Bankruptcies that we have, bankruptcies go on forever, it seems like, and they can go back, uh, those years as well. But also for your interest, if you turn that page over, what's really nice for you to have just at your little fingertips is how much money goes where to these taxing entities. And these are just about the top fifteen that you see. And, um, when you look at them, of course, Burnley County and the city, but look at APS. We've, we've got a lot of money going there. So when we talk about schools and teachers, um, no, that's where a lot of property taxes go. You look at C and M, uh, and other, other places. Um, Arroyo, the Yamafka, the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District for our environment. That's, that, those are good key things for you to know and to have. I can get more granular if you need more detail, so don't, don't hesitate to, uh, email or give me a call. Um, and we can get that information for you because we've got it blocked out by entities, by charter school, whatever information you need, we have. So I, I don't want you to forget that. But that's where we stand and, uh, I appreciate your time on listening to me report out.
Any questions for madam treasurer? Commissioner Barboura?
I have questions about the eight, the, moving to the ten percent, are we talking about that right now?
Yeah, any questions?
Well, I don't know that it's a question, I guess more of a, just a bit of a concern. I think we moved to the eight percent. I was totally in for that because I thought great to, um, get more investment. I just have a, I, this is the first I'm hearing of it, but I also just have a issue with holding like public dollars for up to ten. It means for ten years, we can't access those funds, right?
Um, not, the, the securities that we buy are, are transferable, they're sellable on a secondary market if we needed that cash. I don't ever want to manage liquidity to be forced into selling, just in case if those are at a loss. Um, so I think it's pretty targeted. Um, the way that we manage that is by limiting just ten percent of the portfolio to go out that five to ten year period. Um, and then the other thing is, is there's definitely a risk going out the five to ten year, uh, investments. The main thing is, so back to what Deanne said, where we track dollars back to purposes. So generally the forty to fifty million that we would deploy out to the five to ten year piece, uh, time periods, um, is going to be made up primarily of the DFA required reserve. So in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, what is the risk that we would actually have to draw down that DFA reserve? And would we need to dip into that last forty to fifty million dollars of the DFA reserve to meet whatever need that that might be? Um, I think that's pretty low on the risk side because the DFA required reserve is a hundred and thirty million. So, you know, essentially we'd have to go through ninety million dollars before we get to that, to be forced to sell. It's really tricky because there's a lot of different things that would play into that, um, at that time, you know, because we could have, you know, rising gross receipts tax where that might be able to offset the need. So it's kind of tricky, that's, yeah, why we wanted to just focus on that little, uh, ten percent of the core portfolio only. So we'd still keep the highly liquid and the cash match amounts in place.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, if I might.
Please.
What I wanted to say is we have, like Ryan said, we have to maintain that level for DFA. If we get to that point, we're basically filing for bankruptcy, which means we've exhausted everything we have. And because of our financial management, the investments, our budgeting, we don't allow ourselves to get to that. That's why we have that additional five percent that we have even before we get to, the twenty-five percent that we have to set aside for DFA. In the past, when we had MDC out of county, uh, In the past, when we had MDC out of county, we had the two Treasurers back, the investment issue, we were able to use a portion of that 5% and not even have to get to the DFA reserve. So it's a consistent number that pretty much sits out there. That DFA reserve is based on the upcoming year's budget. So as our budget increases, that reserve amount increases as well.
Thank you, and I think I understood.
Commissioner Barbo again, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you. I think I understood that. I think my worry, well, it's, I just don't think it looks good to the public. It's not, I don't, I think we're doing so well and grateful for everybody's expertise, but to push up to the 10 years. We were six before, we went to eight. We were five, we were five and went to eight, and I thought that was a good big move. I just felt uncomfortable with extending to 10.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
I also want to point out, the point was made that we can sell them, but I just want to reiterate, we're not required to hold those until maturity. We, we could sell them tomorrow. And yes, if it's a rising rate environment, then we might take a loss on it. However, if it's a falling rate market, we would get proceeds from it. Either way, we have access to sell those instantly if we needed to for other cash needs. It's just that if you, if you do hold it to term, guaranteed that yield, which is, is kind of a hedge that if rates are dropping, we want to try to pull in a better yield for return on investment, if that makes sense.
Commissioner, leave us and then.
I just wanted to ask a question, like, is that at a cost? But that's at a cost, right? If we had to pull them out?
Your speakers.
Not necessarily. If, if, if rates are higher than they are now when we sell them, then yes, there would be a cost. If rates are lower than when we purchased them, then we would have a proceed.
Thank you. Commissioner, leave us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I want to recognize Commissioner Barbo's concerns here that, yeah, I do think it, it sets a little bit of a, of a weird mood in, in the sense that the county is talking about investing public dollars for 10 years. In other words, you know, that that can look like we're not going to do anything with it for 10 years. But as many have stated here, we do have the DFA required minimum, which is, in my opinion, much too high, given that the minimum requirement on municipalities is substantially less than the minimum requirement on counties, despite the fact that our operations, the city and the county here, for example, are substantially similar. So I think that's an unfair burden that's placed on us at the state level, not something we can really deal with right here, right now. So because of that, I think what Deputy Travestad said about the, the fact that, which you say we'd have to expend essentially 50% of our reserve already before we even hit the 10-year liquidities, the 10-year products, we would be in some sort of incredible crisis at that point. So I, I see both, both points here. The other thing that I wanted to point out was just that capitalizing on that higher yield right now is, is not necess, so I'm just a little bit concerned about the fact that the 10-year horizon right now looks really attractive as we're moving into a falling rate environment, we think. And that could change at any time, right? Economic conditions could change, inflation could spike, and suddenly we're back to hiking rates. So I don't think we really know what's going to happen, if everything is unpredictable. So right now, it's favorable to have those long-term investments when you can lock in a higher interest rate for longer. But if we swing back the other way, we could be stuck holding investments that are yielding substantially less than what's available on the market. So this isn't really my strong suit, like investments and investment products and what's the right course here, but I do see that there's definitely a couple of different outcomes here, and, and it's really just kind of trying to, in many ways, trying to predict the market with the best possible advice and expertise that, that the Treasurer's Office brings.
Madam Chair and, and members of the board, those are, those are great points, and those are exactly the, the points we mirrored in our investment committee and in our working group. And, and that's exactly why we put the guardrails on there, so that only 10% is in that five to, what did we say? Yeah, five to 10 years there, because we don't want to be practicing, trying to guess what the market is. We want a structured, safe approach to using the amount of time that we have in statute to play with. And I use play not as a term of we're going to go wild, but if we have that in statute, we should be able to use it for our good and the good of our community. We're facing a lot of difficult decisions when we talk about behavioral health, when we talk about homelessness. And I want to give us that flexibility that allows for being able to pay for things as we know our economy is changing, having come through COVID, having come through inflation, and some other issues that we faced. And we think moving out to that 10-year in a very limited way is the way to provide that flexibility. I see my investment committee member has, has joined us, so I think he has a comment, if you would allow it.
Yes, please. Mr. Diggs.
So as an expert witness, so to speak, I spent 25 years in the municipal financial advisory work, tax-exempt bonds. My focus was healthcare and higher education. And my last five years was as treasurer of a $3 billion healthcare system. I oversaw portfolios a lot and the issuance and the purchase of bonds. One thing, the fiduciary in me says, wait a minute. It's not wait a minute, it's like, do not lose focus on, and I'm geeking out on you, I'm sorry, but they're not changing the duration. So even though they have the ability to go to 10 years, that doesn't necessarily mean they will. And it's only, what, 5 to 10%? And now, if I really geek out on you, it's the markets. The markets are very opaque in, for example, the eight-year term. That's in the secondary market. The 10-year term, if they're buying a 10-year issue, that is not opaque at all, and it's competitively bid. So what is being proposed is actually very beneficial to the county and does not really raise the risk at all.
So I have a question for you. So the, your committee betted all of this, and your recommendation is option A that you presented to us today?
Yes, the investment committee did, did like option A. And as we talked through all of these issues, was, was very favorable and understood. Yeah, we're not moving everything over to 10 years. We're just taking that portion and being able to say, you can go out 10 years. It doesn't mean we're going to go there right away or even at all, because we still have GPA looking at all the options every day for us. If they don't see a good agency buy, they're not going to buy. That's part of being a fiduciary. But again, having that flexibility to go out 10 years, I think right now is, is a good option for us and giving us that flexibility. We, we heard it before in benchmarking, it's still best practice to do a 10-year benchmark, not trying to do an eight-year or a blended zero and five benchmark. So it, it also provides clarity for us, which helps that structure and helps that discipline that we've put in in our strategy.
Thank you, Treasurer. Any other questions? So I'm hearing that, I want to, we have two motions. I move to give advice and consent to the proposed quarterly investment strategy, option A. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes, Treasurer. And then I move approve, to approve the changes to the investment policy that were, that were presented to us today. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I know it's a good discussion, and I'm glad you participated in that and brought those forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is just the announcement of the next Board of Finance meeting, which will be Tuesday, November 12, 2024, here in the Kansas Sanchez Commission chambers. If there is nothing else, this finance board is adjourned. Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you.